Good evening. I got seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Here.
And Mr. John Welch?
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening we have Resident Pastor Mark Poson here to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Father, we thank you so much for your love, for this time here, and Father, just for your goodness. Father, we look forward to the fall, the refreshment, the beauty of the fall as we get ready to transition into a new season. Father, we were reminded of your beauty and the refreshment that comes from you. Father, we're thankful for the mayor, for the city council members, for the city administrator and staff, for all that they do and work to benefit the city of Bel Air. Father, we just pray that you would just bless this meeting tonight. Father, that you would just provide your wisdom, discernment, Father, on agenda items, discussions, that they may bless those who call Bel Air their home. And Father, we're thankful for all that you'd provide, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pledge allegiance to the American flag. Next item is determined agenda additions. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing now, I'll move on to the consent agenda. So this contains only the minutes for the August 15th meeting, regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item is appropriations ordinance. So this reporting period includes two payroll periods. Large payments were made for CCUA operations and maintenance and the debt service, an amount of $200,000. $50,000 to Apex Excavating for Cedar Pass, $136,000 to Garver for 45th Street Engineering, and $235,000 to Norwood Construction for Cedar Pass. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 23-16. All second.
Motion by Mr. David, second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. The next item is city requested appearances, and we have Mr. Pat Herman and Mr. Dakota Zimmerman with Garver here to give us an update on Woodlawn.
Looking for the clicker. Is this clicker? Oh, okay. Here we go. New clicker.
Should be a green light at the bottom. It's on.
Okay. Testing?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. And when I'm done, I'll stand for questions. Thank you. So as always, we start with safety statement. This time, we're going to talk about pinch points. More importantly, the hand injuries, pinch points. Eighty percent of the OSHA-related recordable injuries are related to pinch points. So things to remember here is understand our surroundings, stay alert, know how the equipment operates around you. Very important. Understand that conditions change all the time, and we need to be flexible with those conditions changing, and communicate with the people all around you. So as of now, working days, we are at eighty-four percent complete. Based on the working days, we've charged three hundred and sixty-four days to the project. Thirty-two days have been charged to the project since the last council update. So that is of the revised three hundred and ninety day working day plus forty cleanup days. So some of the activities that have been completed since our last update is the surface lift of the asphalt south of the railroad tracks has been installed there. The railroad intersection has been opened up to two-way traffic through the intersection. The pedestrian signaling has been installed for the project. The parking stalls and the sidewalk at the park have been poured, and then the change order work at St. James and Odessa Streets have been completed or almost fully complete, and the frontage road at Gunnison is all but complete. It still needs the tie-in section for Perryton to be completed there, so. Current activities is paving surface, tie-ins at Forty-Fourth Street, Danbury, Perryton, and Quill Ridge. Roadside improvements, they're installing some sod and doing fine grading generally along the west side of the project, north of the tracks now. Pretty much everything south of the tracks, the sod has been installed with exception to a few areas, so. And then the contractors have been working on partial demobilization because they really don't need that lot as much anymore for staging, so they're starting to demob some of their equipment from that lot south of the Dollar General. Current activities here, got a picture of the surface lift going in. This is south of the railroad tracks, looking south. Once again, the surface lift going in. This is looking north, south of the railroad tracks there. And this is a picture of, well, just the sod that has been installed there, so. Looking pretty good. This is our traffic flow map where we're at today. So you'll see the highlighted areas. That's more or less the areas that the contractor's still working in, so they need the sides of the road to water the sod that they've placed. So south of the railroad tracks, they've got north and southbound traffic in the center portion of Woodlawn. And then we've got, once again, two-way traffic going through the railroad tracks. Then north of the railroad tracks, we've got north and southbound traffic, but it is on to the east side of Woodlawn there. And this is kind of continuing on here. This is showing where we have our paving tie-ins to complete. So some of the work we have anticipated for the next couple, two, three weeks is permanent striping at Forty-Fifth Street intersection, and complete the signalization at Forty-Fifth Street as well, and then generating a work-to-be-completed list with the contractor start. We'd like to get a work-to-be-completed list before a punch list. Makes the punch list much smaller, so we start trying to work on those items a little bit ahead of time, so. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Well, thank you for the update. Do you have an estimate when the striping on south of the railroad track is going to be done?
South of the, I have not gotten an update on that yet, so.
No worries. But thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Herman?
Do you have a timeline for when we'll move some traffic to the west side of Woodlawn, north of the railroad tracks, so we can drive on something smoother?
Understood. Yeah, my understanding, there's an executive session that's coming up later in the agenda. Some things are going to be brought to light for council here, and once those things are brought to light for you folks, then we'll understand how to move forward here. So quick answer is not at this time. I don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean.
A major question I have, and this might be the same answer, but there's twenty-six working days left to charge. That would be finishing the project within the next month, month and a half. Is that realistic?
Same answer, yeah. We don't have any of the answers, you know, due to this upgrade and pavement issues north of the tracks, so.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor?
Figured that'd be the answer.
Mr. Smith.
On the slide where you talk about the working days and what's been charged, you show the amount of working days, which includes the extension that was recommended by KDOT. I don't believe that extension has come before the council as a change order to be approved yet. It's my understanding that needs to happen because that contract is between the city of Bel Air and Pearson, and KDOT makes recommendations like that. When should we expect to see that change order?
The change order for the?
For the additional working days, the fifty-seven?
Additional working days. Change Order eleven and Change Order three had additional working days tied to those change orders.
But not all of the additional working days that you referenced, I believe?
Yes, yes. Change Order eleven had fifty-seven working days.
Okay.
And Change Order three had thirteen.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm impressed you know that off the top of your head.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, any other questions for Mr. Herman? If not, thank you for the presentation, and hopefully we get things moving forward, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Under the revenue-neutral rate law, we are required now to hold an annual public hearing. So at our August 15th meeting, council approved the publication of notice to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and adoption of the 2024 Bel Air budget. Subsequent public hearing is for tonight. I hereby open the public hearing for exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. If there is anyone here who wish to speak on this topic, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and I will limit time to three minutes, so if you hear my alarm go off, you'll know that your time is up. I do have one card from Carol Russell, so I'll ask her to please come first and make her comments. Thank you.
My name is Carol Russell. I live at 6218 East Forty-Fifth Street North, and I would like to know why we are having such a high mill levy raise. I'd like to know the return on my investment from my property tax being raised. What am I getting for my money?
Well, I don't know that we're prepared to answer all those questions, but I will say we did reduce the mill levy by about one point. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to have a reduction in taxes because the assessed values went up like seventeen percent throughout the whole county. I don't know what they went up for your particular property, but overall average for the county was seventeen percent, so that does not reduce your taxes. We do need to maintain city services, and our costs, just like everybody else's, is going up, so we tried to be responsible with that, but also recognize that if we don't keep services up, then you'll be up here asking, how come we're not taking care of water and sewer and streets and those things? So that's my short answer. If, Mr. Lasher, do you have anything to add to that?
No, you did a very good job, Mayor. Yeah, the assessed valuation went up for the whole city. Some of that was for the individual homeowners, but also we had approximately three hundred new homes that came on the tax rolls as well that increased the assessed valuation for the city. So it was a combination of individual homeowners, their values going up, as well as all the new homes that came on the tax rolls.
I don't know if there's any more to say about it, but, I mean, that's my short answer.
Okay. I have my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who'd like to speak about the revenue-neutral rate? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. The hearing is hereby closed. Item B is the consideration resolution for the city of Bel Air to levy property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. So this is a roll call vote, and if there's, we first have to have a motion though, so. Getting ahead of myself.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Smith. So I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Bel Air budget hearing, so I'll now open a public hearing for the 2024 City of Bel Air budget. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on this topic, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Again, I'll limit the time to three minutes, so. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on that? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion to close the public meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item D is a motion approving the 2024 City of Bel Air budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 City of Bel Air budget as presented and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next item is citizen's concerns. Do we have any citizens that would like to talk about any other city business other than budget and revenue-neutral rate, or had heard about those? Hearing now, I'll move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, would you like to make a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Only thing I wanted to touch on is a resident contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and she had spoken to somebody that had called 911 and had had to wait for a few minutes before dispatcher spoke to him, and she asked if it was advantageous to ever directly call the Bel Air Police Department, and I visited with Chief Atterberry, and the answer is absolutely not. If you have an emergency situation, call Sedgwick County 911 directly. And there have been some other things in the news about their new CAD system, and it's running fine. There's been some national news about twenty-minute waits and two-hour waits. That's not happening in Sedgwick County. You should call Sedgwick County 911, and they will route whatever you need through there. If there's something, Chief said, if you want to talk to the police department about something that can be put on an answering machine, that's fine, but call directly. And then one other thing I would mention is, it used to be when you called 911 and a dispatcher was not available, it would ring and ring and ring, and now you go into basically what you'll perceive as being on hold, but you are in a queuing system, so don't hang up and call back thinking that's advantageous either. So then also wanted to point out that fall sports are starting on the sixteenth. Appreciate all the volunteer coaches, and also want to point out, buy concessions when you're there at those soccer games and football games to help support the Lions and their work. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. And on the 911 note, I did visit the new facility here a couple of weeks ago. They were in transition. They were using their auxiliary facility at WSU for probably the last three or four months until that facility was redone, so they've moved into the new one, so hopefully calls are getting answered even quicker. And they do have a good, it's quite a system. If you ever have a chance to tour it, you should take advantage of it. It is something else, so. Mr. Welch?
I didn't have a report, but I'm going to add on to your 911. If you have a medical need, you should call 911 anyway, even if it's not an emergency. They will prioritize your call. I had a need to get somebody to a hospital last week, and they did have to wait a couple hours, but they did get transportation, and I was told that was exactly the way it worked. They prioritize. If there's an emergency call, you just wait because you're not emergency if it's not life-threatening. So go ahead and call 911 if you have a medical need.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I have is that I did attend the CCUA meeting on August 24th. It was a relatively short meeting. Key points from that discussion, there has been no additional communication from KDHE regarding the utility authority's response to the consent order. We did review bids for some painting work that needs done at the facility that includes some sand blasting and heavy-duty painting. Those bids came in significantly higher, I think, than anyone expected, close to $100,000 for painting, which is not what I expected, and so those bids were opened at the meeting, but because they needed to be opened in the meeting, the utility manager hadn't had an opportunity to really review them, and so no action was taken on that. And finally, the authority did determine that we needed to send out an RFP for the well-maintenance program that, as that needs to be renewed over the next, for the next years. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I also attended the CCUA, and we were generally in compliance. There was one outlier due to the July Fourth rainstorm, but generally looking pretty good. Thank you.
Because it was the last rain we had, didn't it? Unfortunately. Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a few items. First, I wanted to say, last week on Wednesday, I attended the Joint Water Waste Water Conference here in Wichita. It was hosted by the Kansas Water Environment Association and the Kansas Section for American Water Works Association. It was good. There was sessions on topics ranging from collection systems, government affairs, operator training, stormwater technology, water distribution, and more. I passed the agenda to Ty, just in case it's something that Public Works might be interested to attend in the future. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Bel Air Chamber Lunch. That's the first Wednesday of every month. It'll be in the community room here at City Hall in Bel Air. Networking Lunch starts at 11:30, and then generally the meeting and presenter starts around noon. The Workforce Alliance is the speaker. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was BikeWalk BikeRoll Active Transportation Summit. So KDOT is hosting an active transportation summit in McPherson later this month. It's September 20th through 22nd. The main goal is to deepen attendees' understanding of the Kansas Active Transportation Plan. This is a first of its kind, at least since 1995, when they did their last active transportation plan. The purpose is to explore the needs of people who walk, cycle, use mobility assistance devices, scoot, and more. This is from their website. I'm not going to read the entire agenda, but suffice it to say, there's a lot of folks involved with KDOT, BikeWalk Kansas City, BikeWalk Wichita. There's also a session on Friday that is for safe routes to school, and that is sort of a program that Kansas is looking to sort of reboot, so just wanted to inform the community that there's an opportunity for that, to partake in that and help us with our community planning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Well, thank you. To you along with that, WAMPO is working on an app that you can have on your phone with all the bike and of all the bike and walk paths in the entire metropolitan area. I don't know when that's going to happen. I know it's in process, so. But it's good to know that they're having that, that conference in McPherson. I do hope everybody had a restful Labor Day weekend. It's our first day back, so welcome back, everybody. So I understand yesterday was our city manager's birthday, and last Saturday was Councilmember Dean's birthday. So happy belated birthday to both of you. Hope you had great celebrations at each end. Okay. So I'm glad Woodlawn is finally open and a great, this is a great help for everyone in the area. So just so citizens are aware, we know about the issues with the asphalt, and we are working on, on some solutions for that. So core samples have been taken and analyzed, so we will be looking at all that information. Don't have a solution yet, but hopefully we'll have one shortly. Mr. Dean did mention that tomorrow is the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce monthly meeting. I invited Kansas 85th District Representative Patrick Penn to join us at that meeting, and he's not making any formal presentation, but this can be an opportunity for me to meet the person who represents us in Topeka. For those who live on the east side of Bel Air, that's the east side of Woodlawn. Right on the west side of Woodlawn has Mr. Casey Obasan, and maybe we'll invite him in future, at a future time. So on Thursday, August 17th, I attended the Sedgwick County Power District Steering Committee. This is only our second meeting. We adopted bylaws. We elected Chair Carl Amery. Am I saying that right, Greg? You, you know him. Carl Amery. A.M.E.R.I.N.E. I never hear his last name pronounced, so just, just call him Carl. So anyway, and Vice Chair is Kathy, Katie Tindell. So the Sedgwick County CFO, Lindsay Poe Rizzo, who is a recently new Bel Air resident, so welcome to Bel Air, Ms. Poe Rizzo. She gave an overview of the Fire Board Budget, which is a separate taxing authority from Sedgwick County. The one significant task we had to make recommendations on was firefighter pay. So we heard from the fire chief, from the presentation, from the president of the local fire union, and based solely on their recommendations, we recommended the Fire Board adopt a particular plan. There are like five different ones, so I won't go into what it does. However, we really lacked sufficient information on the various proposed pay plans to make an informed decision. So just like Bel Air tonight, that budget had to be approved by October, and so we were just too short of time to be, to be presented with information and ask questions fully, to be fully informed. So we did communicate that concern with, with our motion to the pay plan, and we've not heard what the Fire Board did with our recommendations. So the Wizards Total Business Journal on Friday, September 1st, quoted Mr. Bradley Tidman of JP Wigan as saying, "Bel Air is probably the hottest market we have in terms of new industrial and residential growth. Once construction starts with the Integra plant, I and Mr. Tidman believe additional buildings will be built, both owner occupant and speculative industrial." So this reinforces what we've said before. Bel Air must position itself to be able to manage this growth so that we continue to have the small town feel while welcoming explosive growth. We are working on this, but with our traffic study through Trans Systems and our waste, our water and wastewater study through PEC, and the key will be to keep our focus so that the future of Bel Air remains as the life better on the edge. So please continue to support our businesses along Woodlawn during the construction. Things are better, but there's still, things do impact their, their traffic flow. Welcome back, Jennifer Hill, who's filling in for Maria, is our city attorney. I'll now ask our city manager for her report, for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. We are getting into the dog days of summer, and what typically happens is we have water main breaks because it gets hot and dry, and we've had several of them. And so I apologize for anybody that had, had to do without water for a few hours, but that happens. And unfortunately, our Public Works guys had to come in on Sunday on their three-day weekend. We had a, a big break on Edgemore, and so they had to tear up part of the road and fix that. But they did really appreciate the new VAC truck that was bought. I'll be sending some pictures so you can see what they did with that, but they said it worked great for them. 53rd Street is back to gravel. The ironic thing is that it rides better than it did. I drove down it today, and the dust wasn't bad, and it actually rides much better than it did previously. So, but of course, that's just a temporary fix. I think Garver was telling us at the last meeting that they're going to send out bids to turn that back into asphalt next month, or the bids will be, go out next month. And we're doing the sewer main linings in Park Vista and Lawn Terrace. They're finishing those up now, so that was something that council approved earlier this year. And then we'll be working on, or Vance Brothers will be working on the scrub seal and slurry seal for the locations that were identified in the plan, master plan for street repair at the end of the month. So I'll get more details, but encourage everybody to make sure they're following us on social media because late when we have leaks or things, people without, we, we get it out right away. And to keep up on all the, the street repairs and things, we try to stay active on that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The story seal and additional is also going to involve Oliver.
Yes, sir.
The full length from 37 to 53rd.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just one comment. When the packets go out requesting the bids for 53rd Street, it might be good to request an alternate option for concrete on the street, just so that we could see what that would cost. I think that would be interesting to contemplate.
All right. Moving along, we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. And item 12A is concerning special assessments. So the city issues temporary notes to fund various public infrastructure projects. Most are related to development and spread as special assessments. After the temp note expires in three years, the projects are completed, the city issues general obligation bonds and spreads the costs as special assessments. There are a number of actions that must occur as we issue the bond and spread the specials. So Mr. Kevin Cowan from Gilmore and Bell is here to explain the actions and taking place tonight. Mr. Cowan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor, you, you did a bit of a refresher course. I thought I would do a little bit as well. So all of your special assessment projects commence with a petition signed by a majority of the property owners, and then the governing body takes action by resolution, makes findings that these are advisable projects and should proceed. After those resolutions are adopted, the city issues temporary notes as construction financing for the various projects. Those temporary notes historically have been three, three and a half year maturities, maturing in, or on November 1st of each year. So what we're talking about tonight are projects that were authorized and financed originally by temporary notes issued in 2020, and those temporary notes mature November 1st. This is the first step in the assessment process. It's, it's a due process situation where the governing body approves final costs. Projects are done. We're approaching temporary note maturity, so we, we have all of the costs. We know that the interest costs will be, what the bond costs will be. Those costs are totaled. Finance Director has provided much of that information, and then your financial advisor and I organize it into some of the documents that you've seen. So tonight, you will be considering the establishment of those final costs. Once those final costs per project are determined, the assessment rule can be calculated. And so part of what you're approving tonight is the proposed assessment rule based on those final costs, and then the method of assessment that was included in all of the authorizing resolutions. Next thing is to have a public hearing with respect to those proposed assessments, and your action tonight would call for that public hearing on September 19th, so two weeks. And then also the giving of notice of that public hearing, which is done by mail to the property owners, and then publication in the official city newspaper, at least 10 days in advance of the public hearing. So that will happen later this week. I did want to mention quickly, and you may have looked at, at this, but the projects we're talking about, infrastructure to serve Bristol Hollows Phase 1, Central Park Third Edition Phase 2, and Rock Spring Edition Phase 7. Last thing, one of the things we always do when we, we get the final costs is compare the final cost to the estimates that were in the original resolutions. And those all check out, all of those resolutions exclude interest and finance costs, which are a little more variable at the time the petitions are submitted. So the petitions will have an estimate of the engineering and construction, exclude finance costs, and then also include a 1% per month escalator because that's recognition, these may be bid, these projects may be bid sometime in the future. So if we're in February of 2020 and the projects get bid in October of 2020, there may be some changes in, in market prices as we've seen over the last couple of years. So all of those checked out in terms of comparing final costs to what were estimated in the petitions. So I'll stop there. Stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan? I'll entertain a motion. It's a long read.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve, approval of the statement of final cost assessment role certification, notice of public hearing, and form of notice of hearing and statement of cost proposed to be assessed, established September 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM to meet for the purpose of hearing any and all written or oral objections to the respective assessments set forth therein. Authorize the publication by the city clerk of Exhibit C, notice of public hearing in the official city newspaper, not less than 10 days prior to such public meeting date. Mail Exhibit D, notice of public hearing and statement of cost proposed to be assessed to each and all owners of property affected by such assessments at their last known post office address on the same date as the publication of Exhibit C, notice of public hearing. And file each of said documents of record in the office of the city clerk and make the same available for public inspection.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is sidewalk replacement program. So in 2022, sidewalk replacement program grant is a grant program allows residents to apply for grants to repair sidewalks with issues on their property. In 2022, the council approved a $15,000 for the program. Code enforcement sent out notifications to 23 Bel Air residents in regard to damaged sidewalks. City received 23 applications with 20 being awarded. In order to achieve cost savings, the city then bundled repairs into a single project and requested quotes on the project. In all, 93 sidewalk slabs were replaced for a total of 1,860 square feet of sidewalk. The program has been a success and is on the agenda to consider for 2023. So staff recommends staying at the $15,000 amount for 2023. I think it's a good program, and it balances the payment of repairs against all residents instead of just burdening the homeowner who happened to have property adjacent to the sidewalk. We all have property, and some of us have sidewalks and some don't. But I do use sidewalks, even though I don't have one in front of my house. So my only question is whether we can move the consideration of this up in the year 2024. So consider, this is September, and it seems a bit late in the year. So I'd like to see it earlier in the year if we can.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, okay. Are there any questions to the city manager?
Got a comment. Do you have one too?
Go ahead.
Okay.
This program is not working like I had hoped it would. I had hoped homeowners would come forward on their own and ask for money, and it, the two, we've done this three years now, haven't we? Every one of these projects has been one where the city has sent out a notice that there was a problem with the homeowner's sidewalks. I would like to see some, maybe think about, it's, we're not going to do it tonight, but maybe think about a different reimbursement rate for those people that come forward on their own from the people that have been sent notices. Otherwise, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with spending this money this year.
All right. Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think that this is a really good program. I think it helps keep our city looking attractive, and everyone benefits from sidewalks. So having, having this program makes sense to me. I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk replacement program for 2023 at 15,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item C. So KDHE, this is a quote for water sampling stations equipment. So KDHE requires monthly water sampling to ensure safe drinking water. And currently, each sample must be taken from a faucet within the structure of an approved location and must be meet KDHE regulations. So the current method of collecting samples requires a staff member to enter private homes and businesses, which can cause scheduling conflicts with the residents. Citizen, cities are now switching to dedicated test sampling stations, and staff recommends that Bel Air do the same. So John Stamen with Public Works, am I saying your name right, sir? Okay. With Public Works is here to explain that program and answer questions. Mr. Stamen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Yeah, please speak in the microphone.
Yeah. Sorry.
I know, for taller guys it's harder, but it is. Nobody hears you if you don't. All right.
I'm here to answer any questions that I can.
I have a question. It's stated that KDHE requires us to take it from inside a home, but now we're building places that are outside of homes. How are we still going to meet that requirement, or is that requirement changed? I'm just confused.
They do allow for us to have a dedicated sample station outside of a building, as long as it is locked up and only accessible by a staff member who is eligible to take the sampling.
Okay. And when you take that sample, then do you have to run the water for like five minutes or something to kind of flush it out?
Yes.
Okay.
We're required to take a chlorine test first to ensure that the chlorine meets the required levels, and then we take the sample, which is sent back to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. I noticed that the proposal is for material only, and that it states that city staff will be installing the sampling stations. Are you, have you guys installed one before? Are you comfortable doing that installation, or?
We haven't currently installed one, but we are comfortable with the installation. We're very familiar with it. It's almost identical to hooking up a service for a home.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Stamen?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
This makes a lot of sense to me. I'm not having to intrude in people's homes, especially since in the next few years, we'll probably cross that next threshold. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the quote from municipal supply. Want to double check, is that what staff recommended?
Yes.
From, from municipal supply for $1,100 per unit, 49,500 total for the 45 units, not to exceed that for water sampling station equipment.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. On to item D. The developer of Sunflower Commerce Park 3rd is ready to begin construction on first phase. The city requested short Elliot Hendrickson, that's S E H, to prepare an agreement for construction observation services for the, the Sunflower Commerce Park 3rd, the development. The cost associated with the project will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against benefiting lots, just as we just had earlier in the meeting with Mr. Cowan on other projects. So city engineer Ann Stevens is here, and Jake Vassa to explain the work and answer questions. Is there Mr. Vassa here, or?
I'm here for.
Oh, okay.
So this project is for.
So this project is for a series of six or seven, I'm just kind of counting, large kind of storage bulk facilities. The city did authorize the, an IRB for this project some time ago. It was kind of a one unit build at a time. You may remember that, Sunflower Commerce Park Third. They are really wanting to get this in the ground like yesterday. So we have been working with S E H along with the developer and the owner to try and get this done as quickly as possible. Since S E H is very familiar with the project, they are wanting to get moving on it quickly. I felt that it was best to have them perform the construction observation services. We have not used them before. I have spoken with the personnel that will be doing the construction observation, very impressed with their resume and feel that they can do a good job for us. This is for the grading portion of the project. We will be working very closely with the developer, builder, everything, just to make sure everything coordinates.
And the developer is okay with this company and price?
Yes, they're the ones that hired the company to begin with. Valid question.
Just a second check, did we do any reference checks?
I have, yes, and they all checked out.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Short Elliott Hendrickson for construction observation services for the water sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and paving improvements to serve the first phase of Sunflower Commerce Park Third in the amount of 236,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. So item E is continuing with the same project. This is an overlot grading of the project. So it's related to Sunflower Commerce Park Third. And it's for building, just to prepare the lot for, lots for building, for building construction. S H E H worked with the developer to design the grading improvements for Sunflower Park, Commerce Park Third, and three contractors submitted bids. With Unruh Excavating being the low bidder, the cost improvements for these projects will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. So Anne and Jake are here to answer questions concerning this project as well.
So this is just the grading project. The initial push is to get the grading for, you see, the, the second from the bottom building done first. They have their building on order. It, I believe it is supposed to be delivered at the end of October. So we are trying to get the pad for, ready for them to go, trying to be as developer friendly as possible and work with them on the phasing while keeping city standards as high as they typically are. So that is the project before you. They did, they had four requests for bids, sent out three responses. You see the responses on your agenda. Unruh Excavating has always done a very good job for the city. They did the grading over at Cedar Pass. It probably looks the best graded, preliminary graded site that I have seen in a while. So I know they do good work, they would be a good contractor for the city. The range in prices, I believe Andale had a lot of rented equipment. So that's part of the bump in price. There's always a variety of reasons, just what contractors have on board as far as work goes, where they need to get equipment, where equipment is located, hauling costs, et cetera. So very valid, everything checked out, and we would recommend moving forward with Unruh Excavating.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Unruh Excavating in the amount not to exceed $914,727.95 for the Sunflower Commerce Park Third overlot grading project and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and two seconds, I'll take Mr. Welch. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Item F is a change order request that we considered at the last city council meetings. There were some questions asked. And so the ADA, this concerns ADA guidelines established requirements for pedestrian push buttons and signalization intersections at 45th and Woodlawn. Our last meeting, council tabled this item and asked MKEC and staff to bring back more information. So Jay Engelmeyer with MKEC is here to share what additional information was received. Ms. Engelmeyer.
Good evening. Next, as you mentioned, I was here last time and we did talk about, I gave a short presentation on these push buttons. I also gave a, my opinion of that they, it is a recommendation that these are put in by ADA and not a requirement. But I think in talking with Anne and talking with the council, there was some question of wanting to, wanting us to go back and take a look at this a little more. I don't know if you have anything to add on this. One thing I have done between the last meeting and now is, one of my reasons I didn't want to put those in on the, originally, was because they're not required and I have issues with them as far as just, one, their extra obstructions out there on the site. Two, they're just not, you don't, they're not very common at this point. However, in talking with the city of Wichita, they are becoming more common. And in fact, the city of Wichita is beginning to use these more often. And sometimes in cases where, you know, when they do a new signal, they'll put it, certainly they'll follow that ADA recommendation. But they're also now starting to go back into some existing signals that aren't, you know, that aren't associated with the brand new construction and putting some, putting some of these in. So they are becoming more prevalent. They will continue to become more prevalent. And based on that, I now, I think in talking with Anne, I believe putting those five poles in is probably, is the way we should go. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
I did also speak with Mr. Ed Thornton, who is a engineer and construction inspector with FHWA, asking specifically regarding the recommendation versus requirement question. And they did issue a notice back, I believe in 2013, 2015. It is in your packet that did say it is required to follow these guidelines. And unfortunately, since I did ask the funding agency, they are on notice. And so they will be watching this project and making sure that we do follow those guidelines whenever possible. Unfortunately, with this instance, they are possible. So I would recommend we put them in. They are now installed at 37th and Woodlawn. If you've driven that lately, I walked it last Monday and I was very surprised to see the pedestrian poles there because most of those signals do appear to meet the ADA, or ADAG guidelines. So as Jace mentioned, they are becoming more prevalent. I would encourage council to move forward. I did look into costs if council wanted to move forward with eight instead of five. And they said to take the $2,200 bid divided by five, that would be your unit cost, which is approximately $4,400 each. Multiply that by an additional three. If you wanted eight, your total cost would be 35,037-ish. You know, my math is rounding a little bit. But it would be my recommendation to go with the five to reduce the costs. I, the other three movement, push button locations do meet ADAG guidelines. As Woodlawn is already a little over budget, then I would suggest maintaining, or just doing the five. Council always has the opportunity to do more.
Are we required to have one for each direction or can we put two buttons on one pole?
You're required to have one per movement because, because the, the push button itself needs to be located within the, a certain area. And because the movements are separated far enough, you can't, no, you cannot always get the movement to meet, or that, the push button for a specific movement to meet with the push button for the other movement in that same area.
And is that because of the ramps or because of the sidewalks? If we widen the sidewalks or put a triangle in or some other form?
It doesn't matter if, it's the crossing location. So as I'm crossing across the street, if I have extra sidewalk that's not directing you across the street, it doesn't matter. So it's, it's the point of crossing.
Okay, so where we see the orange bumps?
Correct.
Is what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Any question, other questions or comments for Anne or Mr. Engelmeyer?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I appreciate you guys going back. I know we had a pretty robust conversation last time and I've noticed them more, I find them less obnoxious than I thought I did in my mind now that I'm looking at them. And I don't want to risk any loss of funding by not following these, these recommended guidelines. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Oh, and I do, I do agree with keeping within budget, just going with the five. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the change order request from Pearson Construction, the amount of 22,127.70 for pedestrian push button poles at 45th and Woodline and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg. I would like to ask for a 10-minute executive session before we move forward with this motion. And I would like to invite Ms. Anne Stevens, our city attorney and our city manager for client, attorney-client privileged conversation.
May I withdraw my motion then and?
What's procedure? I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, for now, and we'll come back to it, okay?
Going to come back to the whole thing or we're going to have?
Need a second?
I'll second.
Well, we need a motion for the executive session.
Oh.
Did you make that motion?
I don't know that I can make that motion.
I don't think you can make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for attorney, for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Want to invite the city manager, Ms. Hill, our attorney here, and the city engineer. The meeting, did you want to invite Mr. Engelmeyer?
No.
Okay. For a period of 10 minutes and be back in council chambers at 8:08 p.m. for the open meeting to resume.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We're executive session for 10 minutes.
Our budget and contracts, the easiest way on these working day contracts is to base it off the working days allocated to the contract. So as the mayor stated in the packet, our original contract was based off the three hundred and sixty days, the three twenty working days, the forty cleanup days. And with the change orders extending that, that's why the supplemental is matching that seventy. We are not asking for any additional pre-construction or post-construction time. It's really the seventy days that was incorporated into the project to push it out. We also are maintaining our original overhead rate. I think we signed this contract back in fall of twenty-twenty-one. We're keeping that consistent and even lowered our original hourly technician rate from what was originally shown in the, in the supplemental request, which we'll talk about further here. So, you know, that, that eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, how, how do we use that? It was based on three hundred and sixty working days, the three twenty and the forty cleanup for a total of three sixty. As of today, from Pat's update about the project, we have charged three hundred and sixty-four working days. Since the notice proceed back in November fifteenth, just looking at regular business days, don't want to get everyone confused, including myself, four hundred and thirty-seven regular business days have elapsed since that time. And the only reason we show that is how, uh, how we've been really, uh, keen on just really monitoring our, our budget and our burn rate as this project progressed and, and faced issues itself. So, uh, it's sitting pretty good. We do want to clear the air as well. So as you all know, when there's rain day or weather impacting the control item of work, the contractor's not getting charged a day. That does not always mean that Garber's not working out there. I, I can share this story, being in Texas now, they're a little spoiled down there, down south. On their DOT contracts, they have dedicated record keepers that just kind of work from the office and do all the paperwork for them, whatnot. Unfortunately, in KDOT, in our industry, we don't have that. So our inspectors have to do that. So they usually leverage rainy days to kind of catch up on the paperwork and get all that documented, whatnot. So it's not a whole lot, but there are a few, a few times when we're not charging the contractor a day, but we're still working on the project to stay caught up on documentation. So why is the supplemental needed? As we stated, and as Pat mentioned early on, there's two change orders approved through this project. Change order number three, change order number eleven, the added seventy working days. So those days have already been added. We are just trying to extend our budget to reflect those additional days added to this and carry it on. This has been a tough project that everyone is fully aware of. There's no doubt about that. But we feel we've been very judicious of maintaining our budget, monitoring that as this project has elapsed over time. If this project would have finished at the three hundred and sixty working days, we wouldn't have asked for a supplemental. You know, we, we met that, we were carrying it on, we monitored our budget through that whole timeframe. So that's why that's, that's happening. So how do we facilitate the project? A, a big part of us, you know, we've been working for the city for a long time, is we're, we're really keen to help city staff out, especially in a project like this one has been. So being a conduit of information, you know, really working through disputing negotiations, bringing in in-house experts, really just trying to be a trusted advisor and supporting the staff to navigate this and supporting KDOT as we go through. Uh, assisting with the procurement of the railroad utility permit, assisting city and the design engineer in alternate phasing, which we've been through a few on this project. Really just kind of being there to help keep this project moving forward. And of course, the public involvement, uh, doing these updates. If you recall, last year, we did that KDOT LPA kind of workshop that we brought Sue Eisman in. And, uh, also assisting with the public involvement emails and, and addressing citizens' concerns. We want to illustrate or show this graph to illustrate how we've, uh, kind of handled the budget. Of course, uh, city staff reviews our invoices every month and, and reserves the right to question if anything looks out of whack, but the orange line there is kind of a, we'll call it a baseline of how a normal project will go through with our budget, you know, just kind of start off with one inspector, then we'll bring another one on and then midway through, kind of hit the peak and then start tapering off. As you can see with the blue line, those are our actual invoices through that time. So when the contractor was slowing down through those periods that we recall where it's a little slow or it's real wet, we pulled staff back. You know, we're just not gonna keep staff out there charging the project when there's really no need for them. So we want to illustrate this, to show that, that we're monitoring that as the whole project progressed. So going to the breakdown. The original, original agreement was eight hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six and sixty-one cents. When we first submitted these supplemental to city staff in KDOT, it was two nineteen, three twenty-three oh eight. Ty Lasher beat me in arm wrestling and really challenged me on, on this, but it was more just a relationship with the city. They asked us, you know, look at this with how this project's been going and, uh, what we can do to help this out. And so actually, we, we chopped off about twenty K and, and to be frank with you, that was more just taking our profit off these extra hours. We just wanted to do what we can to continue our relationship with the city and keep it going on. So that was what's coming down there on that for these additional seventy days. So how are we gonna use the supplemental agreement? We have a history of working with Ann and Ty and the city that, uh, we've been very cognizant of our budgets, not wasting them, not wasting staff hours and whatnot. And so we're gonna continue that. Obviously, we proved that we were able to do that with this project and we'll continue with that effort and staffing the project as it needs to be staffed. We do want to clarify, uh, there may be an opportunity. Don't know, I can't guarantee it. I'm not saying there's gonna be an opportunity. I'm just saying there may be one that additional days are at, are added on the project. If that's the case, we'll evaluate and see where we're at and make that decision. But it's our hope that we're trying to prevent that so we don't have to come back and ask for another supplemental. But again, we can't guarantee that, of course. And lastly, it's an hourly not-to-exceed request. If we don't use it, you get that money back. And so it's there to, uh, keep our staff on the project, keep us going and whatnot, and we'll, we'll monitor that and, and be judicious with it. If we don't use it, it's, it's back to you. I believe that is it. Yes. So I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to the KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B two exception for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Like to invite the city manager, Jennifer Hill, and the city engineer to the executive session. The meeting will be for a period of ten minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at eight thirty-one PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and, and second by Mr. David for executive session for ten minutes. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We're in executive session for another ten minutes.
If we don't use it, you get that money back. And so it's there to keep our staff on the project, keep us going and whatnot. And we'll monitor that and be judicious with it. If we don't use it, it's back to you. I believe that is it. Yes. So I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to the KSA 75-4319B2 exception for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. I'd like to invite the city manager, Jennifer Hill, and the city engineer to the executive session. The meeting will be for a period of 10 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 8:31 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. David for executive session for 10 minutes. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We're in executive session for another 10 minutes.
That was part of the original petition cost estimate, that additional dirt. It was there if we would have caught the mistake on the inlet top elevations. That was excavation that was part of the project to begin with. So that's the request for tonight. So we've taken care of the first part of that on our own. And we're just asking that petition project would take care of the additional excavation, which was planned from the very beginning. We're still under the cost per lot with this change order. And the streets that bid, which is the next item, cost per lot estimated from a year and a half ago. So financially, the project is in good shape to sustain this. And with that, I'd ask or stand for any questions?
Just to clarify, you're saying that the excavation, this excavation would have been done had you not made the other error.
That is correct. Therefore, it was. Yes, that's exactly correct.
Money that wasn't spent earlier, but now it needs to be spent.
Now it needs to be spent.
Because you corrected the error.
We corrected the error. That is correct.
So the original cost estimates are not changing.
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you. I appreciate your taking care of the error.
Well, we wanted to.
Yeah. Any additional questions or discussion for Mr. Baum?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order request from Noak Construction in the amount of $29,624.93 for additional backyard easement grading in Cedar Pass and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Motion second. Most by Mr. Smith, the second by Mr. David. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries five to zero. On item I, this is accepting bids for Cedar Pass paving. So the developer of Cedar Pass is ready to move forward with the paving of phase one. Garver completed the design and solicited bids for both asphalt and concrete. Four contractors submitted bids with Kansas paving being the low bid for both concrete and asphalt. Concrete was bid was 20% higher than asphalt and council has determined. If concrete is less than 30% over asphalt bid, it is better in the long run to pay for more for the concrete now, which saves future maintenance costs. The developer would prefer asphalt as he feels asphalt is much quicker and higher interest rates make the 15-year specials more attractive than the 20-year specials. So Mr. Baum with Garver is here to representing the developer. I would like to explain the request and answer questions.
Good evening again. Gene Viterelli is the developer of this property and he has, he, pardon me, has an affinity for asphalt pavement. And he's just used to that. He understands the city of Bel Air's position with the concrete pavement. In fact, before we bid the project, Mr. Ty Lasher and Gene Viterelli and myself met and discussed it. So he was very clear on the city's policies of asphalt versus concrete, just to make sure. He understands your consideration tonight. He does like the idea that it can go down more quickly and the project could be completed a little bit quicker and get Evergy in there to get the power and all that move forward. His intent is to get started this fall. So because of that, there's, there are some savings on the interest rate between 15 and 20 with the price difference that you might consider. And it's a preference of his. I told him I would come up and visit with the council tonight and ask for your consideration of the asphalt paving option. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
How much faster is the asphalt than concrete?
At the very least, it's about two and a half weeks because we added 15 working days to the contract provisions if you used concrete, recognizing the idea that it needs to cure in place. I think the working days on the project was 20 or 40, I'm sorry. So two months, it would add another two, maybe two and a half weeks, just so you know, timeframe.
Okay, and both of these bids are less than the original estimate, correct?
That is correct.
So we're not talking money, we're just talking less than time?
Correct. And a little bit of interest difference over the 15 versus 20 for the price difference.
Yeah, but we're still less than original, so I don't.
That is correct.
Consider the interest to be a factor.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamburg.
Just so I understand, so the concrete from the future taxpayers concern is going to be, is going to last longer and be easier to maintain? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
I'll ask Ann to comment on behalf of the city because that's the position of the engineering staff on the use of concrete versus asphalt.
It would be my position that if we went with the concrete, it is less maintenance. Everything cracks. Asphalt tends to crack more. They tend to crack wider. There is also the ongoing maintenance of the asphalt. Every seven years-ish, we should be applying some sort of sealant or rejuvenation spray. So that is not only additional funds coming out of the city's pocket, but that is additional time on city staff to be going, to be keeping track of what streets need that rejuvenation treatment, going out securing bids, coming back to council. It's kind of all of the above. Eventually, those streets do need to be overlaid or replaced because the sun does come down and evaporates the asphalt holding the rock together, which it doesn't do on concrete. Concrete also provides a little bit more stable surface.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to comment that I appreciate the developers' perspective here. And I know that the time is important. From my perspective, I think it's really important that we apply our mental models consistently to projects. And that that's something that we, you know, do on a regular basis is have a way that we think about, you know, approaching these projects and then do it consistently across each of them so that everyone's treated fairly. And so I'll be supporting the concrete option.
Do you have something more?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving for concrete paving in the amount of $650,739.86 for the Cedar Pass paving improvements and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
I have motion by Mr. Welch, the second by Mr. Smith. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item J. This is consent agreement or annexation by, between the city of Bel Air and James and Narnie Woolley. The owners of unplanted eight-acre tract of land have signed the consent agreement to have their property annexed into the corporate boundaries of the city of Bel Air. Agreement includes a temporary tiered tax rebate zoning plan and agreement to allow the property to connect the city water and sewer at a later date. This parcel is completely surrounded by Bel Air and was an island of the county, the county within the corporate city limits. Council requested staff work with the owner to have this partial annex. And so our city attorney has answered, can answer any questions. I'm not sure she is well versed on this one, so I'll retract that. She probably won't be able to answer many questions. But Mr. Lasher, maybe you can, if there are questions.
I only have one question. It looks like we've still got one square there that's not being annexed. And I'm guessing that's the city of Wichita parcel.
Yes, so the city of Wichita purchased some, well, let's see. Are you talking about next to the school?
No, aren't we not talking about Webb and 53rd?
Yes. Oh, yes. So that little piece there is actually owned by the city of Wichita. They put in a pump station, or a pump station for water. And so they purchased that from the homeowner.
Is that a recent transaction or is that?
No, that's happened probably five, eight years ago. So that's actually owned by the Wichita. And I don't think they'll allow us to.
It's consent fund to annex Wichita.
Well, it's under, under law, it's an island, right? I think they've filed it back.
Okay.
Nobody else is talking. I'll make a motion to approve the consent and agreement to annexation by and between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and James and Narnie Woolley and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, the second by Mr. Dean. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries five to zero. On item K is an ordinance annexing incorporating a portion of the section into the boundaries of the city of Bel Air. And this is the same property. This is just actually the ordinance versus just accepting the agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to accept an ordinance annexing and incorporating a portion of section 20-26-2E into the boundaries of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, the second by Ms. Hamburg. This is a roll call vote. So I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item L. During the budget process, council prioritized employee retention as a goal. And in looking at surrounding cities and competitors, it was included that Bel Air was one of only a few municipalities in the region who do not offer this type of retirement system for police. And that retirement system is a Kansas police and firemen's retirement system. Currently, our police officers have keepers, right? Okay, so as efforts to continue for retention of current officers and aid of future recruitment, this move was included in the 2024 budget. This resolution starts the process. Are there any questions of our finance director?
We don't have an effective date. Is this January 1 or?
Yeah, January 1, 2024. This is just the resolution that states, and then I do a mountain of paperwork, and then we'll be ready for 2021, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I know back in May when we did the steering workshop, I had some serious sticker shock. But after thinking about it, I'm happy that we can still been able to lower the mill levy. And I think it's something we have to do. Ted gave some inspiring Think Like Generals talks as we look at maps that everybody around us is doing it. We've brought our pay up. I know Wichita has like a quarter of their patrol officer positions open. There's a lot of competition out there. And so I'm going to go ahead and be supporting this in order to attract and retain competent officers.
Ditto what Ms. Hamburg said.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
We did have lengthy discussion on this at our workshop, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept our resolution that makes application in accordance with KSA 74-4954B to becoming participating employer in the Kansas police and firemen's retirement system to provide for the inclusion of all current eligible police officers and to transfer the membership of all police officers presently covered under the Kansas Public Employees Retirement System to the Kansas Police and Firemen's Retirement System effective January 1, 2024 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Most by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch.
Mr. Mayor. I just had one question for Ted. What is the next process? Because you said this is going to go into effect January 1. What has to happen after this?
Yeah, so there's, you know, I'll submit this to capers and then we'll hold a large training session with all our officers, tell them what the process is going to be. And then they switch the accounts over to KPNF. And then it provides payroll, staff, which is me, time to adjust all those deductions and set up the accounts and go forward. So that's, that's kind of the why we want it now is just so we can start the process. And really, because it's a retention tool, we want to get it in front of our officers as soon as we can so that they're not even questioning whether or not Bel Air is the right place or not.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item 13 is executive session. I would like to request a 30-minute executive session for contractual obligations.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Good. Thank you, I'll second that one.
Well, we can do that. So Smith and Welch, all in favor of a five-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We're in recess for five minutes. That motion carries five to zero.
So we are back in meeting, call the meeting back to order. We had recess, so I now ask for an executive session for 30 minutes.
I will make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject Attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Invite the city manager, city attorney, and city engineer. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes. An open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 9:26 PM.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Welsh, second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, our executive session for 30 minutes.
We'll call a meeting back to order. We held an executive session. No binding action was taken. I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Make a motion to extend the executive session for 30 minutes with the open meeting resuming in council chambers at 9:58 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Dean. All payers say aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Another 30 minute executive session.
Well, executive session, no binding action was taken. I'm going to call the meeting back to order and move on to our next item 15 or 14, which is the workshop. So next Tuesday, we have workshop at 6:30. And this month, the council workshop falls on September 12th. Does that work for everyone? I assume it does.
Yep.
We do it all the time, but sometimes we have conflicts. So the agenda includes final report on Park's master plan for Rec Center, Bel Air Park, and Central Park. The Central Park pool will also be discussed, a presentation on Public Works Facility Study. Anything else that we need to talk about? If not, we can move on to agenda item 15. And if we want, if somebody wants to make a motion, we won't discuss it. Adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All second.
Motion by Mr. Welsh, second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Too bad. Motion passes five to zero.